And they did stories on our programming, which were, as I said, very impressive. I also reached out to the Commissioner of Education, Angelica Infante-Green. And she was very kind to come to our district on July 23rd. She went to Burnin Heights. And she spent about an hour there just observing our summer enrichment program for our students at Burnin Heights. Burnin Heights utilized a theme of STEM, as that was the... That's what most of the schools in our district did, is they had a variety of themes. Theirs happened to be STEM. So the Commissioner, as I said, was there for a good hour. I was there, Chairman Bourget, you were there. There were other members of Central Office. And I'm just going to report that the Commissioner was incredibly impressed with the summer programming that we've provided our students here in Windsocket. So much so that she said of all of the districts she attended this summer and observed their summer programming, that Windsocket was the best. And I'm going to repeat that again. Windsocket was the best. Oftentimes, we hear in Windsocket the things we don't do well enough. But I'm here to say, we really knocked it out of the park this summer. And I want to thank again, the administrators, the teachers, the staff, our incredible students and their families for an amazing job that they did this summer. And I think we owe them an amazing applause. She also said she wanted the governor to come into Windsocket to see the incredible job that we are doing this summer for our children. She also, in addition to that, reached out to the Providence Superintendent, who is coming to Windsocket tomorrow to meet with teachers and staff at Burnin Heights to find out what we did that was so incredible, so that they can replicate it in Providence and in other districts across the state. So again, I want to thank all of our teachers and staff and students and families and administrators that were a part of our summer enrichment. We use those funds as a part of the SRR2 funds. We're going to continue the work over the next two summers. So we're really excited about the programming that we're going to continue to provide our students over the next two summers. Secondly, last evening, there was a...
Can anybody hear them? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
I just messaged Al again.
He's gonna love you, Lynn.
He already does.
I know.
I raised a little bit of holy HU double toothpick when I had to go to a meeting at the middle school and the elevator was down and the meeting was in the library. And I was essentially denied access to the meeting because the building wasn't ADA compliant. He and I are best friends. He's working on it.
I bet he is.
Yeah. But I did let him know we have no sound.
Do they have captions?
Not that I know of.
No, no.
I don't know. I haven't attended remotely since...
Lastly, Mr. Chairman, I have three appointments that I am very excited to make this evening. As the committee and the community are aware, we've had a variety of administrative changes this summer. And I'm going to announce three of them here this evening. First, I'm going to start with Mr. Jeff Guio. I'm pleased to present Mr. Jeff Guio for the position of Principal of Windsocket High School. Mr. Guio transfers from his most recent position as interim principal at Windsocket High School. Mr. Guio has over nine years of administrative experience. He's beginning his third year as administrator here in Windsocket, serving as both assistant principal as well as interim high school principal. Previously, he served as principal of John F. Dearing Middle School in West Warwick for five years and as assistant principal of West Warwick High School for two years. During his time as a school administrator, he built the school leadership skills necessary to be an effective building leader, while at the same time balancing the multifaceted details of leading a school with over 1,600 students and 140 staff members. Concurrently, Mr. Guio works for college boards, serving in a variety of roles in the area of curriculum design, instruction, and as a facilitator for educator professional development. Mr. Guio holds a master's degree in secondary school administration from Providence College and a bachelor of education in secondary education and mathematics. He is highly qualified per the Rhode Island Department of Education regulations as a building-level administrator. Based on Mr. Guio's education and work experience, I am very pleased to announce him for the position of principal for Windsocket High School. Mr. Guio is here this evening.
Jeff, why don't you stand up and let people see you? There we go.
Get a little closer, maybe, next time, Joe. You get a real close-up of the front page of the call. That'll be nice. Secondly, I am very pleased to present Ms. Karen Barboza for the position of Assistant Principal at the Windsocket Area Career and Technical Center. Ms. Barboza transfers from her most recent position of I-Explore Pathways Instructor at the Career Center. Ms. Barboza has worked for the Windsocket Education Department in the secondary level since 2008. She comes to her new role with over a decade of educational experience, the majority of which was centered on building a robust, personalized, and individualized learning experience for urban youth. In her most recent role, she was tasked with designing the curriculum for a new career exploration course, while also serving as lead support to the middle school team for their rollout of the companion grade six to eight program. She has a documented track record of crafting relevant and impactful professional development opportunities for teachers and expertise in organizational management. And as an aside, I hired Mrs. Barboza many, many years ago, when I was principal of the then-old middle school as an eighth-grade science teacher. Mrs. Barboza holds a master's degree in education from Vermont College and a bachelor of art in history. She is currently pursuing an additional master's of education in educational administration from Providence College. She is highly qualified per the Rhode Island Department of Education regulations as a building-level administrator. Based on Mrs. Barboza's education and work experience, I am very pleased to introduce her for the position of Assistant Principal for the Windsocket Area Career and Technical Center. And last, but certainly not least, I am very pleased to present Ms. Kelly Gerard for the position of Assistant Director of Special Education and Student Services for the Windsocket Education Department. Ms. Gerard comes to us from her most recent role as manager of specialized instruction and services elementary schools for Providence Public Schools. Ms. Gerard has 26 years of experience in a variety of special education classroom settings. Her most recent role, coupled with her leadership experience, brings valuable insight into her new position. Over the past two years as an elementary manager, her main focus was centered on transforming the mainstreaming process for students with autism and social-emotional needs. She worked to collaborate with elementary schools in the redesigning of their MTSS procedures and processes, making it a fully-functional team. Ms. Gerard holds a master's degree in special education from Providence College and a bachelor's degree in early childhood education from the University of Rhode Island. She is highly qualified per the Rhode Island Department of Education regulations as an administrator of special education. Based on Ms. Gerard's education and work experience, I am extremely pleased to introduce her for the position of Assistant Director of Special Education and Student Services for the Windsocket Education Department. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that completes my recognitions and announcements. Thank you.
Dr. McGee, any school committee member have any comments? I'll make a motion and receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Leclair.
Yes.
Is it me? I can hear again.
Well, that was great comic entertainment. Thank you, sir. Next. Now, we have quite a few minutes to approve. So I'll make a motion to approve the July 13, 2021 closed meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Leclair. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Leclair.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the July 13, 2021 open meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Leclair.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the July 19, 2021 closed session minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclair. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Leclair.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the July 19, 2021 open meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclair. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Leclair.
Yes.
And finally, I'll make a motion to approve the July 21, 2021 open meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
To Dan.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclair. Does any school committee member want to take anything out of order and discuss any particular items within the consent agenda? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Leclair.
Yes.
Back to you, Dr. McGee, for your superintendent's report.
Thank you, thank you. And there's no buzzing, so that's even better.
I agree.
Yes, I'm going to start off with personnel. I want to just let the committee know that we are feverishly trying to fill many, many positions for the start of the school year. For this round, we've filled approximately 20 full-time positions in the Windsocket Education Department. And we've also filled a total of 12 teacher assistant positions and/or PCA, Personal Care Assistance, in the Windsocket Education Department. So we're working very hard to close the gap of the number of positions we have open. I want to thank Ms. Dargan and our principals and teachers and staff for working very hard to conduct interviews and hire people as quickly as we can. I have great news with respect to update on the contract negotiations. We have reached agreement with the three, the two unions, the Windsocket Teachers Guild, Local 951, for their teachers' contract and the paraprofessionals' contract. And we've also reached agreement with our local 1137 union on a contract for our secretaries and custodians and maintenance. So I want to thank Mr. Stewart. I want to thank Mr. Turgeon. And I want to also thank Mrs. Ozanian and the union leadership for working with us here to come to agreements. This time around, it was a lot easier than it was three years ago. And I think a lot of that had to do with really the level of trust on both sides. So I would like to thank the union for their collaboration in reaching the agreements as we move into the school year. That's one less thing that we have to worry about. I'd also like to thank the Windsocket Education Department negotiating team, Chairman Bourget, Mr. Burke, Attorney Rapport, who are up here on the stage, as well as the other members of our negotiating team. It takes two to tango. And I think both sides went in with open minds. And I want to just congratulate everyone involved. Lastly, I want to speak, I'm going to speak briefly on the update to the State of Rhode Island guidance for COVID-19. I know that at the last school committee meeting, we had conversations about sort of a timeline that we were going to be following with respect to reopening of school. So I want to just let the committee and the community know where we are with respect to the reopening plans. As you may or may not be aware, the Department of Education sent each school department a template to complete, which outlines the reopening plan, which is not nearly as extensive as last year's reopening plan. But nonetheless, there are still some components to that that we are in the process of completing. And we'll be submitting that to the Department of Ed on August 27. Included in that will be our either policies or guidance around a variety of things, including masking. And masking is obviously an important issue to our community. It's an important issue to really all communities as schools prepare to reopen in the fall. We have not made a decision at this point in terms of what our masking guidance will be. That decision will be brought to the school committee on August 25. So it will be our next school committee meeting, where our draft guideline will be presented to the committee. And the committee will hear what we have to say. And we'll make a decision one way or another. So right now, again, I'll reiterate, we are working on the plan. We are working on all components beyond just the masking, including, but not excluding, not excluded to testing. You know, are we going to test students and staff when we return to school? We are looking to do that. However, our thought process so far is we would provide parents the opportunity to opt to have their child tested during the course of the school day, should they present with COVID symptoms or not. So that will be left up to parents. Masking, we're still looking to gather more information. We're looking to get more feedback from families. I appreciate the folks who spoke here this evening. If there are others out there that feel strongly on either side, please reach out to me. Send me an email. Some of you already have. Certainly, reach out to the school committee to let them know what your feelings are on that front. So that's all I have to present to the committee this evening around our reopening. But again, to reiterate, on August 25, I will be presenting the plan that we're going to be submitting to RIDE on the 27. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Does any member of the school committee have any comments?
The chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
Thank you. As Dr. McGee mentioned, at the last school committee meeting in July, there was a great discussion about the wearing or not wearing of masks. And as we also hear tonight, some of the concerns as well. Unfortunately, I was not able to be at that meeting in July. So I would like to offer some of my thoughts tonight to add to the discussion that WVD will have as they come to their plan. Last month, as we said, wearing or not wearing masks was a major topic. Now, a lot has changed in our country, even in the month, even since the last time that we had our meeting. The COVID-19 Delta variant has grown and infected more individuals, especially those who are unvaccinated. The discussion, though, about wearing a mask would only be a secondary need to the vaccine for COVID. If more people are vaccinated in our country, in our state, and in our city of Windsocket, then we might not have to talk about masks at all. But right now, according to the Rhode Island Department of Health, the city of Windsocket, where our students come from, has the lowest vaccinated rate of its population in the whole state. Now, that rate is 46% of the eligible residents who have received the vaccine and are fully vaccinated. The state rate is 63%. More alarming to me, the rate of those under the age of 24 who were eligible, which includes many of our students, is at 18% fully vaccinated. These rates show to me, I am sure, that many of our families of our students are not fully vaccinated. And our students who are eligible to be vaccinated are also not vaccinated. It makes then clear sense to me that to protect the safety of all our students and our staff in our schools in the face of this now-growing COVID-19 Delta variant and because of our low rates in our city, that we need to strongly recommend the wearing of masks in our schools. The poet John Donne once reminded us that "no man is an island unto himself." We need to consider the safety of all our students. I graduated from a Jesuit university, Boston College. And the motto at many of the Jesuit schools in this country and in the world is the call that we need to be, quote, "men and women for others." This is a moment now in our country, in our state, and especially in our city, where we need to be men and women for others and get vaccinated and wear masks to ensure the safety of all, especially our students of Windsocket. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burke. I... Please. You've given your comments. We heard them loud and clear. I just, I may not agree fully with Vice Chair Burke. Like the governor, I keep my eyes on the hospitalizations. I look at how many people are really going into the hospitals compared to prior months and almost a year ago. And those numbers are still drastically very, very low. Recently, Dr. Alexander Scott came up with data that showed that in Rhode Island, of all the COVID cases since the beginning, since they started tracking them till now, till July, 95.4% of the cases... Somebody talked about cases? Well, 95% of those cases were for people who were elderly, who were unva... Who were not, who were aged well over 18. The under-18 population, students, and including their teachers, was 5%. So they looked at students and teachers, 5%. So I'm looking at those numbers, and they didn't even break them down in terms of how many were vaccinated or not, because for a good portion of that period, there were no vaccines. So I look at that and say, unless there's a massive drastic change, drastic change in the numbers, especially the hospitalization rates, I don't see why masking will be, would be required. However, however, we have a governor that hopefully will act. Right now, he's not. He's a matador. He's letting, he pulls the cape up and lets somebody else take, make the response, make the decision. So if we don't, if the mandate isn't here, then it's the district that will decide. And like many districts, and I've checked with my fellow chairman across the state, many of the school committees are making a decision at the end of the month, this month. And obviously, checking to see what, what really, what will change in terms of hospitalizations, sickness, et cetera. So we, things have changed in a month. And they are going to change this month. So we're going to see where we are. But right now, I do not see... To me, it's a parental choice issue. However, we're not there yet, as Dr. McGee said. We haven't made a decision yet. He hasn't made a decision. We're going to, we are not, most likely have a policy. We will have guidance on all these, all the COVID issues. So stay tuned. Two weeks from now, you'll hear more from us. Mr. Leclair, do you have anything you'd like to add? Then we will, I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclair. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Leclair.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into conferences and discussions. I'll ask Ms. Morrell to give us the special education update. It's not working. Hold on a second. You may be getting the cavalry coming right over the out.
Take mine.
All right, thank you. So at this time, the special education numbers have stayed the same from last month. We're at 27.7%. There's been no change. Before Dr. Sullivan had retired, she started an initiative for the apartment from the trailer to move inside the high school. I'm glad to say that Room 134 will be outfitted as a studio apartment and ready for daily living skills for the students in the transition program. It's a perfect way to incorporate the daily living skills into that curriculum for the students. And it will be ready for September 1st. And the next thing is that we are working very closely with the multilingual learner department, with Ran Yagia. We are recruiting for our pre-K classrooms that are starting on the second week of September. A flyer will be sent home this week through our email blast in each of the buildings as well as posted throughout the community to recruit for our pre-K classrooms. We are recruiting four-year-olds as of September 1st for a full-day dual-language pre-K classroom as well as a, another general ed pre-K classroom. And then we have two half-day classrooms for three-year-olds and four-year-olds. That's what we have.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Morrell? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the special education update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, I'll ask Mr. Notoriani to give us the facilities technology update. It's working.
Are you okay, Mickey? Sure? Thank you, Chairman. So this evening, for the technology portion of the update, I just want to update the committee that we are in the process of configuring the new Chromebooks for our students. You may recall that we purchased new Chromebooks for K through 12 at all grade levels. We are currently prioritizing grades K, 7, and 8 for the beginning weeks of September. And then we will follow up with the remaining grade levels by the end of September and the beginning of October. In addition to configuring the Chromebooks, we are also working on setting up the GoGarden Parent Portal, which is an initiative that we've been working on for several months. This will allow parents to be able to log in and access and see what their students or their children are doing on the Chromebooks while during school and when they're at home. We're also working on the digital reservation system for the school buildings, a new key fob access system for our staff, website revisions for the upcoming school year, social media accounts that are going to be governed by the school district so that we follow all the appropriate protocols and regulations because we're a public entity. We're updating the registration process and the security camera system here in the district. In addition to that, we're currently working In addition to that, we're currently working on the uploads to RIDE. We are working on the student enrollment upload and the teacher course section and student uploads that are required for us to submit to RIDE in the beginning of August. For the facilities update, we are currently working on classroom moves and relocations, master keys for district-wide, painting in classrooms, the Windsocket High School student apartment that Mrs. Morrell spoke about, school playground repairs, medication lock boxes, parking lot signage, and the OTP swings for our students. So those are some of many projects that they're currently working on. That concludes my updates this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Notorianni. Any questions or comments for our director? And I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the facilities update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
We have no unfinished business. We have one item on new business, which is a discussion only on ADA compliance for all our buildings. Some of our buildings are old, some are newish, but there are times when, for example, elevators in the middle schools are not working. We have had issues with ramps or the accessibility to a building, for example, McPhee, McPhee Building. So I'd like to ask Dr. McGee, our Director Notorianni, and maybe even Mr. Peri to really add some thoughts as to where we're going to proceed with this, because I think we're at a point that we've got to, we've got to take care of some of that. For example, if the elevators aren't working here and somebody has to get to the second floor, unless you get them a rope or you carry them on your back, how are we going to get them up there? So we have not discussed this, or at least in earnest in terms of the facilities committee, subcommittee. And I think as we prepare our five-year plan, some of that has got to go in there. ADA has got to come to the front burner, where it wasn't, you know, we had, we've taken care of some items, but we've got some major issues in some of our buildings to make sure that all our teachers, staff, students, and visitors have access when they need, when they need it. Because right now, we've got issues. We've had it in this building when we had a meeting where somebody couldn't get to the second floor because the elevator was out. We were waiting for parts. So if you want to add to that, Mr. Dr. McGee?
Sure. I can start, and then if Mr. Notorianni would like to add anything. So you bring up a very good point, Mr. Chairman. While most of the buildings in the school department are ADA accessible, there are situations that arise, which arose here at Hamlet Middle School recently with the elevator being out of service. That what compounded the fact that it was out of service is that we, we had to wait, and it's scheduled to be repaired, I believe, on Friday. I could be wrong, but approximately Friday, is just the inordinate amount of time we have to wait for parts to come in to repair the elevators, especially in this building and in Villanova. So the buildings that are ADA compliant like this one, I think one of the things that we've talked about and we're going to be exploring is, in particular, selecting maybe different vendors to use. As an example, the elevators. Vendor that we are using now, if we're not satisfied with the amount of time it's taking for them to service the elevators when they are, you know, inoperable, then we would choose, you know, to seek out another vendor, which hopefully would, would make that situation of ordering parts, you know, much more, much quicker. Other types of situations where we have ramps at our schools, we need to, you know, ensure that we're maintaining those ramps. When there are situations where they need to be, you know, their modifications need to be made or things like that, you know, we need to make sure we're doing that, which, which we do. We have a situation currently at the Career Center where the ramp that leads into the Career Center was repaired, but it wasn't really repaired to perfection, if you will. So we're, while it can still be used, we're in the process of, of having that ramp looked at by a company, bringing a company in so that they can, you know, make full repairs to that ramp. Other buildings in the district that we have that are, that are very old buildings would be, you know, an example would be Coleman Elementary School. And Savoy, however, Savoy not to the degree of Coleman. At Coleman Elementary School, because of the age of the building, there, there's not an elevator in the building, and there, there is not a ramp really to enter the building. So that's one of the, one of the schools that we're going to need to look at as we move forward to, you know, determine what exactly can be created so that that school is ADA compliant. We have some, some people from RGB, which is the architectural firm that we have been working with for, for many, many years. And I know Mr. Notorianni has, has been meeting with them, has had, and has had conversations specific to our buildings and making sure that those buildings that are not ADA compliant become ADA compliant. So I don't know, Mr. Notorianni, if you want to sort of take it from here?
Thank you, Dr. McGee.
Better yes or no out.
Absolutely, Dr. McGee. So yes, Dr. McGee is correct. We have invited the team from RGB, and we've also invited the team from City Point Partners, which is our owners' project manager, which they're managing the overall capital plan project. So we do have some significant needs here in the district. When I came on board for facilities a couple of years ago, the committee may recall that we initially launched the capital planning process here in Windsocket to avail ourselves of the bond funds that, that were approved at a couple of elections ago, during the general election. So I think I've invited the two teams here if there's any specific questions the committee may have, but I think it's worth noting that we are currently in the process of the five-year capital planning here, which is a process that's heavily regulated by RIDE, which ensures that we're meeting all the compliance standards for ADA and any other building requirements in the state of Rhode Island. So part of that process is what's called a facilities review, which we're currently doing at this moment in time. We've been visiting buildings. We've done some site surveys with our staff and our faculty during the months of September and October. We'll be scheduling public comment sessions where we'll have an open-ended session to present potential planning for the local buildings, and we'll provide an opportunity for community feedback. And during that process and during all of these reviews, we're visiting each of the schools. As a matter of fact, it's quite quintessential that today we had a complete review of the entire district with several of the contractors and partner firms working on the capital plan so that they can develop the structural plans to submit to RIDE to make some of these improvements. Again, this is in process. It's something that it takes a little bit. We're expecting to submit a plan to RIDE sometime early next year. And part of that planning process accommodates things for ADA. And it's anywhere from, we've internally looked at, for example, handicap parking spaces at our schools. We've purchased the signage, and we're looking to do that in-house. But it's anywhere from that to ramps, accessibility for doorway width, all the way to elevator accessibility, which we know we're lacking in a couple of locations. There's significant amounts, all the way down to the hardware on doors in terms of what's the appropriate doorknobs. So all of that is taken into account, and it's a very thorough process. And when we're done with, with the capital planning and we move forward with whatever's chosen to do, I think you're going to see some significant improvements here in the district. In the meantime, there are things that we are currently entertaining at the local level that we can fund out of the local budget that are, that are smaller items, such as the parking signage, such as making sure that, you know, we have things that are obstructing pathways and access, not just for ADA accessibility, but also for fire code. There's a lot of overlaps. So there are many things that we look at at all, at all times. I think it's worth noting, if I could just pause for a second and say, first and foremost, there was an unfortunate situation, which I will take responsibility for, and I apologize publicly to both the committee and Dr. McGee for it occurring. We have had some unsatisfactory service with the elevator company, but at the end of the day, that's something that should not have occurred. So I apologize. That being said, we are going to look to how we can improve the service we're receiving. We are going to look at other vendors, because just because parts are not available isn't, isn't a good reason. So, and there are ways that we can also accommodate for situations such as that, which that process didn't occur, and we will be tightening up our, our procedures to make sure something like this doesn't happen again. But, but that being said, we are looking to address ADA concerns here in the district. It has been something that's been, I don't want to say on the back burner here in the district in years ago, but it's something I think overall that got caught up in some of the financial situations the district's been in years and years ago, probably prior to this committee and this administration. But it's something that we definitely need to get caught up on, much like we get caught up on other things here. So if the committee has any specific questions on how the process works or examples of what we could talk about in terms of ADA, what we could do initially versus what would be in the five-year capital plan, again, I've invited both teams from RGB and from City Point Partners. Particularly, RGB could step up and answer any, any questions you might have, or myself or Dr. McGee.
One of the, well, the two buildings that I see need the most work is the McPhee Administration Building and Coleman, Coleman School. And I don't know if our architects, management team, if RGB has looked at these two buildings and determined what is planned, or is it too soon for that? But to me, when you, when going into those buildings, it's hard to envision ADA compliance unless you're going to put in lifts, put in an elevator. I mean, other than building a new building, what are we going to do with these two buildings? Because some of the other buildings, like, like Dr. McGee said, they're in pretty good shape. They may have some modifications, but those two definitely are going to need some work. So I don't know where we stand on those.
So, so the teams did visit the buildings today. They met and visited with one of our facility supervisors to go through each of the buildings. My understanding is they were able to tour all of the buildings today. The directive from earlier this week was to obviously do what they would normally do during the review, but to focus and hone in on ADA accessibility in terms of what we can do immediately, to see what we can do, and then what it would take long-term based on several factors. One of which is, is to, you know, for example, it's costly to put in an elevator. I mean, ultimately, that, that's, that's a solution. That's what we're going to need to do in some of these buildings or, or, or even further. But I think at this point, with the review that's occurred today, I think we have a good solid base to go back and say, here's a priority list of what we might be able to do immediately.
Sure.
And, and we will prioritize and also factor in what the cost would be, which will better inform the committee and the administration as to what we might be able to do out of local dollars versus what we're going to have to put in the capital plan.
Questions? Thank you very much for coming to our meeting, and I look forward to your report or further discussions, because programs are important, but you gotta, we need buildings to execute those programs. So I'm looking forward to hearing, you know, what recommendations will be brought to the committee. Having no other items on our agenda, I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:56. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.